... United States of America, the third republic of the world, we stand... One nation, under God, indivisible, the universe.
Third, help us to use your eyes so that we may see the many beautiful things that surround us. Give us the courage to speak and share our ideas. Help us to be friendly and respectful to each other because we all have something to contribute for the good of others. Amen.
I've got a very special thing to do tonight. I've known Mike Hogan and his family for over thirty years. I'd like to introduce to you some of his family members. His wife Jerry, his daughter Lynn, his grandson Andy.
Granddaughter Emily.
Their mother Karen, his daughter Helen Vanderwater, Vandywater, that's Jerry's mother, Vic Bell, Charlie Fadden, son-in-law, Dennis Lyons, son-in-law, two great sons, Mike Hogan and Andy Hogan. I had thought at one time that Sandy and I would have Hogan's son-in-law, but that didn't work out. I've known Mike for over thirty years. I've known him as a neighbor and as a friend. I've known him at sports events. I've known him for all the outstanding hard work that he did with the Democratic Party. I've known him as chairman of the Fulton Housing Authority. Most of all, I've known him as a devoted husband, a father, and a grandfather. I've also known him, of course, as an alderman. He was an alderman for ten years. He sat in this seat and served his city well. He was the president of the Common Council at one time, and he was an inspiration to everyone that knew him. Two and a half weeks ago, Mayor Stafford lowered the flag at City Hall in his memory. We also had a moment of silence at the last council meeting, and City Clerk Joe Tietrow prepared a resolution from the council and from the mayor, which I will read now, and the mayor will present it to Jerry. It's quite long because, as Jerry said to me, within the last couple of weeks, Mike was everywhere. The outpouring of friends that knew Mike and knows the family was tremendous. He gave them all strength as they gave the strength back to us. Whereas Michael E. Hogan passed from this life on July 31, 1998, at A.L. Lee Memorial Hospital in Fulton, New York, and whereas Michael Lee Hogan was born in Fulton, retired in 1993 after forty years as a Lion District Inspector for Niagara Mohawk Power Corporation, and whereas Michael Lee Hogan spent many dedicated years in public office as a second and third ward alderman, past president of the Fulton Common Council, past president of the Fulton Housing Authority, past member of the Fulton Fire and Police Commission, and a member of the Fulton Democratic Committee, and whereas Michael Lee Hogan was a Navy veteran of the Korean War, and whereas many of our citizens have benefited from very successful programs such as Fulton Knee High Basketball and the Fulton Softball Association of which he was a founder, and whereas many of our youth have benefited from Kiwanis softball where Michael and his daughter Lynn M. Lyons coached and were shown the fundamentals and sportsmanship that are sorely lacking these days, and whereas Mike and his wife Jerry Hogan planted the beautiful flowers that adorned the Fulton Municipal Building, and whereas Michael Lee Hogan served his city in all respects as he only could with his honesty, his integrity, his fairness, and with a deep love for his city, and whereas Michael Lee Hogan is survived by his wife Jerry, two daughters Karen L. Fadden of Hannibal, Lynn M. Lyons of Fulton, two sons, Michael P. Hogan and Andrew P. Hogan, both of Fulton, two sisters, Anemee Baldwin and E. Shirley Hogan, both of Fulton, eleven grandchildren and a great-grandchild, and whereas Mayor Michael K. Stafford, members of the Common Council, all city employees, all his friends, all city and county officials, and all who knew him feel a deep sense of loss and wish to convey our deepest sympathy to his family and be it further resolved that this resolution of respect be spread upon the official minutes of this council meeting of August 18, 1998, and be it further resolved that a certified copy be sent to the immediate family of the late Michael Lee Hogan. And I would like to move that resolution.
I'll second it. On the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Your Honor, go ahead.
I know Mike can be very proud. He was the alderman right till the minute he died, you know that. He drove Bob Weston crazy. Can't hear me?
I don't know. Maybe it doesn't... Terry pick it up or nothing.
But I just wanted to say he was the consummate alderman, and he loved the city of Fulton. There's one thing Mike hated, and that was petty politics. And he just wanted everybody to do the right thing for the city of Fulton, and I just hope that you would carry that over here. Thank you very, very much. We're likely to see with ourselves, thank you, Your Honor.
Certainly.
Yeah, but that takes half the audience.
Quick call of roll, please.
First Ward.
Here.
Second Ward.
Here.
Third Ward.
Here.
Fourth Ward.
Here.
Fifth Ward.
Here.
Sixth Ward.
Here.
All present?
Thank you. Ron, is there anything you want to add to that?
No, I just said I had the pleasure of working with Mike for six years, four years as alderman and two years as mayor, and back quite a few years ago, we had seventeen committees that we got to be on, and he had to be dedicated because we were here every night. And budget started about August and usually quite about three days before Christmas. Spent a lot of time, and he was a gentleman, and it was a privilege to work with him, and I was quite shocked when he passed away. I hadn't even realized he was sick. That's how fast time goes by. Thank you.
Item number one.
Resolved that the city clerk be authorized to receive sealed bids in his office in the Fulton Municipal Building located at 141 South First Street, Fulton, New York, entered before September 15, 1998 up to 4:00 p.m., and to be publicly opened at 4:15 on September 15, 1998, in the common council chambers of the municipal building to provide the city of Fulton with a five-by-ten electronic message board to be used for advertising community events and other events in accordance with specifications prepared by Daniel Vaughn, Code Enforcement Chief.
Do we hear motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolved that the common council minutes of August 4, 1998 are hereby approved.
I'll move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolved that the city clerk is hereby authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held on September 1, 1998 at 7:00 p.m. in the common council chambers of the municipal building, 141 South First Street, Fulton, New York, relative to a recommendation made by the Planning Commission to approve the modification of the site plan for the Doyle property located at 201 Academy Street, which would allow two parking spaces in the city right-of-way by allowing the Doyles to extend the black top from their property line to the sidewalk.
I'll move that.
I'll second it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolved that the city clerk is hereby authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held on September 1, 1998 at 7:00 p.m. in the common council chambers of the municipal building, 141 South First Street, Fulton, New York, relative to a recommendation made by the Planning Commission to approve the plans in their entirety, including the proposed future parking spaces for parking in the city right-of-way as submitted by Mr. Robert Flynn, administrator of the Andrew MeShad Nursing Home located at 450 South Fourth Street.
Motion?
I'll move it.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Whereas all bids for providing the city of Fulton with architectural lighting for Bullhead Point were referred to Ryan Edick of the City of Fulton Engineering Department for his recommendation of a ward, and whereas after review of all bids, Mr. Edick recommended that the low bid of Gash Supply and the amount of $15,460 be awarded to Gash Supply, and whereas Gash Supply Company has informed the city of Fulton that he wishes to withdraw his bid, and whereas the next lowest bidder is NAP Electric in the amount of $16,632, and whereas Mr. Edick, after being informed that Gash Supply has withdrawn his bid, recommends that the bid be awarded to NAP Electric in the amount of $16,632, and whereas by accepting the next lowest bid, this does not place any undue hardship upon the city of Fulton. Now therefore be it resolved that the bid for providing architectural lighting for Bullhead Point in the amount of $16,632 is hereby awarded to NAP Electric.
I'll move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Just three of them. Just the name.
That's all, back home.
Okay.
Should I go over?
Go ahead.
Whereas by memos dated July 21, 1998 and August 6, 1998, from the Commissioner of Public Works Raymond K. Graham to City Clerk Joseph R. Tietrow, in which he advised the city clerk of expenditures of city funds, materials, labor, and equipment for trash removal on certain premises, and whereas the premises are described as follows: 315 Beach Street, my J. Lee is the owner; 216 Philip Street, owned by Jan J. and Joyce A. Christopher Lee; and 312-314 Gansford Street, owned by Jan A. and Beverly A. Lammy. Now therefore be it resolved that there is hereby levied against the premises described above a special assessments, as specified said assessment to be effective immediately, and the amount of said special assessment plus interest at 24% per year shall be added to the 1999 City of Fulton tax bills if not paid in full prior to December 15, 1998, excepting city-owned property. Interest on said special assessment shall accrue effective as of the date of this resolution.
Motion?
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolved that Chapter 165 of the Vehicle and Traffic Ordinance of the City of Fulton, New York be amended to read as follows: Section 165-61, Schedule 17, Parking Prohibited Certain Hours, Delete on Rochester Street, South Side, Hours 5:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, from 44 feet east of South First Street, east for 44 feet, and Delete on Rochester Street on the north side, 5:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, from 70 feet east of South First Street, east for 80 feet. Section 165-64, Schedule 20, Time Limit Parking, Add Rochester Street on the south side, two-hour parking, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., from 44 feet east of South First Street, east for 44 feet, and Rochester Street on the north side, one-hour parking, Monday through Friday, from 70 feet east of South First Street, east for 80 feet.
Motion?
I'll move that one, too. That's in front of Topath Towers.
Yes.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolved that the mayor be authorized to sign the agreement between the city of Fulton and Marguerite DeSantis to allow Mrs. DeSantis to act as the city's Assistant Dog Control Officer for the year 1998 as an independent contractor.
I have a question. Is this a necessity because of better coverage, or do we need the additional?
This is to take up slack when Dale is out of town on days off.
Coverage when he's not available.
Coverage. We've had people before in this area, but they are not available anymore, so we had to look elsewhere.
Okay. I'll move that, then.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolved that the city clerk is hereby authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held on September 1, 1998 at 7:00 p.m. in the common council chambers of the municipal building, 141 South First Street, Fulton, New York, relative to a proposed amendment to Chapter 151 of the city code entitled Swimming Pools.
I'll move that. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolved that the DPW Commissioner is hereby authorized and directed to prepare specifications for sidewalk repairs, and be it further resolved that the city clerk is hereby authorized and directed to advertise to receive bids for said projects.
I'd like to move that one, too.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolved that the City Chamberlain is hereby authorized and directed to transfer the following: $2,000 from the A. 1990 Contingent Account to the A. 3620.47 Bureau of Code Enforcement Account for mowing expenses, and $2,000 from the A. 1990 Contingent Account to the A. 3510.47 Dog Control Officer Account for nuisance animal control expenses.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolved that the city clerk is hereby authorized and directed to advertise for a common council workshop to be held on September 1, 1998 at 6:00 p.m. concerning nuisance abatement.
I'll move it.
No, I'll second it.
What kind of announcer or advertising do you want on that? We weren't sure what you were looking for.
We want to be able to discuss it, the six of us together, and I think whenever the six of us get together, it's a legal meeting.
We can have a workshop, but I mean, to advertise, how do you want this advertised? Do you want...
I would say to attend, discussion of a potential... Do you want to say that? Potential new ordinance?
This is the next regular meeting, isn't it?
Yes, it'll be...
So it will go out with the official notice as prior to the meeting?
It'll be at 6 o'clock.
You know, the way we should normally send that, is that okay?
And do you want to put it on there that, you know, to discuss a potential new law, entitled nuisance abatement ordinance or something like that? Okay.
Right, right.
Yeah, we're not going to act, we're just going to talk about it.
Great, this is just a workshop on...
Yeah, that's it.
Public employee, whatever.
So that will be sufficient going out with the notice?
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
Okay. We just did it.
Will I introduce him second?
No, we know, okay. Who made the motion on it?
Mark.
Mark, you second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Yeah, just got to do that.
Notation that the appointment by Mayor Stafford of Catherine Lavoti Rice, 312 West Fifth Street, Fulton, New York, to the Fulton Housing Authority to fill the unexpired term of Michael Hogan effective immediately and to expire July 15, 1999, is hereby entered into the minutes of this common council meeting of August 18, 1998 as a matter of record.
Thank you. Under discussion, I received, and I believe you were all copied on it, a memo from Ron Edick in regards to the tree work. And to date, we've spent $15,972. There's a balance of $4,030. And he has approximately $9,700 in outstanding bills and a long tree list with locations for trim, cut, or stump removal. Money is needed to cover the outstanding bills, approximately $9,700, and work remaining on the list, approximately $8,500, along with an additional sum for the remainder of the year. Plus, there's been several calls asking about planting trees in various wards. That figures to be an additional $5,000. Please advise. I believe that the original budget this year was only $10,000, and we've already made a transfer from contingency to that fund in an amount of another $10,000, and we're still very short.
Yeah, and when you get into the first part of the winter season, you're going to need more, though, because we always lose a lot of limbs and stuff, right?
I think what we've always done in the past, we budget like, just to figure to start with, $10,000, we keep increasing it. I think last year, we spent $40,000.
Forty or fifty. Close to fifty.
Where's all this tree work? I have had very little in the fourth ward, and I'm just curious where it's all being done.
Well, I don't have an itemized list. I'm sure that I can get Mr. Edick to put one together.
That'd be nice, because I haven't had a whole bunch either, so...
Okay.
Nor I.
Everybody has been...
That's okay.
Nor I. We're starting to narrow it down.
We're narrowing it down pretty quick.
Whoever keeps quiet, we know where the tree work's going.
Well, I can tell you that...
It seems to be on the west side of the city, north of Rob.
We generally spend forty or fifty thousand dollars a year on trees. That's all we're done. You're in two winter seasons and, you know...
I think we need to realistically look at this at budget time. If we are going to spend this on an annual basis, we shouldn't be budgeting $10,000 and then going over every year. That doesn't make any sense.
That was a concern for me during budget time, and we did, originally, there was nothing in there. And we did get it. I would suggest that we move some money in there for emergency tree work and forget about planting $5,000 worth of trees this year and budget that for next year. That's not something that we really need.
That we could budget, and I have your memo, Bob, in regards to the trees...
Okay.
That we will take action on.
Okay, good.
But I think we need to do that in next year's budget. It will take care of emergencies as they come up, but we're going to need more money being transferred to just cover the rest of this year.
You want 20,000, you figure, 25?
It looks like...
If you add this stuff up, it works out to 19,2 net.
Then you better go more than that. I don't know. I mean, I don't know what we have in the contingency.
I'm just looking at outstanding bills of 97.
Don't ask him. He always says no. He's just a chamberlain.
Outstanding bills of 9,700, plus work to go of 8,500. I'll admit one tree on that list. If you tack the five on at the bottom, that gives you 19,2, because you have to subtract the balances left in the budget. Add the three, you have to get 23,200. Less than 4,000 leaves 19,2.
Well, the work remaining on the list is 8,500. Possibly, we're going to have to look at that list and see if there's any of those we can postpone.
Only do emergencies, that's all we should be doing. I took quite a few people and all that had some trees that could have been trimmed that they wanted down, that really didn't have to come down, and that's what you have to do. They don't always like it, but if they don't need to come down, we shouldn't be taking them down.
Well, if we transferred 10 at this time along with our balance, we would still have a little bit of an emergency balance, and we're going to have to look at that, have them look at that list much closer. Do you agree with those figures?
I'm going to meet you halfway and go 15.
You going to put in the other five? If we go to 15, I don't know, we can't go any higher than that. Probably, that's stretching it.
We're going to talk about a lot of things Tuesday night, and if you want, you can tack that on the list. Would it be better if we did 10 tonight and 10 more two weeks from now? Let's start with 10.
Okay.
You win tonight.
Where's that figure again, 10? Where's that 10 again?
You win tonight, but I'd ask Mary to make sure that we don't forget about September 1st and put together something for 10 more.
Well, we'll expect...
Potentially.
We'll expect to hear from you after...
Yes.
The audit meeting.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion for a transfer of 10,000?
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The next item for discussion is there had been a moratorium on the time limit parking in the downtown area. The moratorium expired as of June 30th, and a number of the merchants and business people downtown have contacted both my office and Alderman Woodward and requested that the moratorium on the time limit parking in the downtown area be re-implemented until the conclusion of the Canal View project.
I agree, because when we originally put the moratorium on parking down there, Alderman Woodward had recommended that we make no changes at all until downtown is done, and then we'll find out exactly where we stand with parking.
Yes. I kept thinking it was going to go to the end of the year. I don't know. I missed that, but I did get a... Same people called Mike, they called me...
It went to the end of last year, and then it was extended until June 30th, so we just have to...
Can we just open-end that and say we extend it until the project is downtown is finished?
Yeah.
You want to just put December 31st on it? Instead of putting the date on it? Hopefully, okay, all right.
Well, who put December 31st?
Put January 1st on it.
Yeah, I was going to suggest the end of the year because the project's supposed to be done by...
By November.
By November, right.
Yeah, and if we do some, if we want to do something after the project's done, we can always come back and change it, but I did get a petition from some of the people down there, and I have a copy. I'm going to give this to the mayor, anyway, but it's got quite a mix of service and retail. Wayne's is on here, Goldberg's, Breenland Land, Empire Vision, and there's Similares and Lock Restaurant. So the majority of them are looking at that, and they have some suggestions that they've made here that they would like us to consider when we get done downtown. And Mike, you can have this one. This one's got the signatures on it. And if the council will look at them and keep them in mind, at some point in time when this is done, we're going to have to get everybody down there together because we revisit this by the month, you know? And it takes a lot of our time, and we really can't camp a police officer out down there to...
No, and we don't want to do that either.
No, it costs too much money, and it's not fair to the rest of the citizens. Okay, Your Honor, I'll move my motion.
We have this, just have to...
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
Yes. That will be to the end of this year, to January first.
I'll have her read this.
Yes.
Whereas the downtown parking moratorium expired on June thirtieth, nineteen ninety-eight, and whereas, whereas it has been brought to the attention of this common council, the problems have arisen since said expiration due to construction in the downtown area. Now therefore be it resolved that the moratorium for downtown parking is hereby reestablished effective immediately and to expire December thirty-first, nineteen ninety-eight.
You're more?
I offered it, and John seconded it, all right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Do any of the aldermen have any business to bring before?
Yes, Your Honor. I pass out to each alderman the patriotic service award. Okay? This will be issued on anybody flying the American flag, or if they have a decal of the American flag in their window, door, or on their window, right? That'll be left to the discretion of the alderman. And if you're out of them, just contact me, and I will give you more. Any questions on that, on this service award?
Nope. Good idea.
Okay, a couple other things, Mayor, before, and then I'll be quiet. West First and Beach and Oak and Park, I've been working on this. There seems to be, especially when it rains, a lot of water just stagnated in the road, so we're, we're looking at that now. This may be a, a project, a big project. I spoke with the chief of police about a study will be done on West First Street, going from the Polish home up to Chubby's, about possibly parking on one side there. Problems I've been getting up there, complaints I've been getting, people racing up that road, because that one side of the road, it's like two lanes going up there, so he's gonna be looking at that. Another thing, I had some people down in Denishe Place asking me about, would there be possible for parking only on one side? So, we're, we're looking into that, and there'll probably be a study on that.
That would be a very good idea. That's something that has been addressed before, and when school is in session and they park on both sides of that street, you cannot get an emergency vehicle down there, so we really need to enact something as quickly as possible on that before school starts again, if at all possible.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I have one thing, Your Honor. It's a good time to bring it up, 'cause I see we have members of the planning commission here, Archie's here. Our legislative committee is still looking at our sign ordinance, and I just wanna know what we have. I mean, are we making any progress on that? You're not looking at it?
I think we put that on hold, Ron.
Well, I'll tell you something.
Is that tomorrow night?
We've had some problems. There's, there's some individuals that have problems with signs. If you go through the city, most of the signs are in the city right of way, and that's, that's a violation of the code. I don't know if we can reach back through the years. I'm not sure we ought, though. But, there's an individual that's in Mark Sherman's ward, and I don't mean to single people out, but he is a Fulton taxpayer. He had his business started in his neighborhood, and when it got a little bit bigger, people didn't want it there, although it was, it was felony of their home occupation, he couldn't have a sign, and he can't have a sign now. And Archie and I have talked, and the code enforcement department and I have talked, and the administrator and I have talked, and the mayor and I have talked. One of our code enforcement people has a sign, and it's over at Lake Nanauna. In virtue of the fact that there's not a structure there, even though the sign meets none of the criteria in the ordinance, it's okay. Now, this sends a bad message to the people that live here and, and that own businesses here. Not that I don't wanna see his sign there, because I think any business is good for Fulton. The sign is not eight feet off the ground to the bottom like it's supposed to be. It's in the city right of way like it's not supposed to be, and there is a vending machine there that he vends out of, although it's not anchored to the ground, it's still there. And if we're going to tell our citizens that are paying sales tax, that have lived in this town for fifty-eight years, that they can't have a little stinking sign out in front of their store, and we're gonna let people that recently became city employees that don't live here do it, I think we're getting pretty creative, and I want something done about it, and I'd just sort of dump that sign ordinance until the legislative committee could come up with something to, that would help our citizens.
You, you were going to address that tomorrow night?
Uh, there's still a lot on the table there. We've had several meetings here, real quick, and we're gonna try to get to it.
Yeah, one, one thing, reason it's been on hold, Ron, is because of the electronic sign. And that may make a difference in, in enforcement issues on the, the signs on the sidewalks and...
Well, I know that, I know, I'm, I'm not sure what we did when we did that sign ordinance. I went along with it, and I'm not sure if we're trying to be like Camillus or one of the other towns that are, that are so very strict in our ordinances, but it's very hard when, when you go through the city and you see a lot of signs like Downtown, Russell Rips, we got a nice big sign banner down there. I mean, nobody addressed that. I have no problem with it. They're doing a good business, but it's, it doesn't meet the definition in the sign ordinance, and they, they are Johnny Come Lately compared to this gentleman, and I just don't understand why, why some people can, some people can't. You understand what I mean? I, I just feel that we're not being fair. That's all.
Well, yes, and tonight was the first time that you brought this to my attention, and I will definitely look into it.
I had Darrell Hayden in here with, man, Mark did, with you and Dan Vaughn, and you asked Dan to go back and work with him, and he come up with a proposal that would cost him ten thousand dollars, and that is ridiculous.
That wasn't going to cost Mr. Hayden that. What they had to do was get that...
They're trying to force the guy that owns the mall to put up a thing for signs for everybody there, and he's not gonna do it.
And take down the sign that he's got there that doesn't accomplish anything, yes.
He's not gonna do it.
'Cause if he takes down the one, then, then legally, they can put the others up.
But you see, the problem is, in order for someone to do that, there needs to be an incentive firm to do it. If you come down four eighty-one, you have Eckard, you have Carvel, you have the taco joint there, and you have the liquor store, okay? When you're going down four eighty-one, they've all got signs. This fellow's around the corner. He's not on forty-one. So, all those guys, they have all their advertising now. Why would they wanna change?
Well, if I remember...
I wouldn't want them.
Archie, hey, isn't some of the leverage that you have on the planning commission, I remember, right, the sign that's there is in the right of way? And isn't one of the trade-offs, you include Hayden's shop or the one you have goes? I mean, and that's kinda what I got out of the planning commission.
Well, I just come down through the Hawthorne Building's got one in the right of way, or used to be the Hawthorne, I don't know if it still is. Hawthorne puts a sign there, Zink's problem, no, no, I'm sorry, but they're all in the right of way. Are we gonna make everybody move them out of the right of way? The four eighty-one right of way is a good-sized right of way. They're all in there. In fact, some of the stores are in the right of way. And now I got some in their buildings.
Sorry, Archie.
Every one of them.
I'd like to answer the situation that you're referring to about Hayden's property.
Right.
That particular piece of property, if, if the owner of the property changes anything inside of the, the center, at that point, we can ask for and insist that he remove the sign from the right of way. The Taco Bell sign is a subdivided piece of property.
Yeah, I understand that.
So, he's entitled to his own.
I understand that.
The Hayden property, the, the owner of the pla, of the plaza has said he would put up a sign. He would provide signage, but he has, he would like to leave the, the sign that's there, and we won't allow that. That sign, the Carvel sign should be removed if he does make the additions, and at that point, he should provide signage for his own people. I don't think the rest of the city should be subjected to the, to the needs of one business person.
I don't agree with you. I don't think that we should treat one differently than a...
I don't think we are.
Oh, we definitely are.
No, because he also has a sign on his building.
Yeah.
Presently.
But you can't see it from four eighty-one.
No, you can't see it from four eighty-one.
And that's where the mall's located. He's the only one. That's where the mall is located, on the forty-one side.
Well, his business is not located on the four eighty-one.
No, I know that, but that's where the traffic pattern is.
I understand that, but I, I think he must have understood it when he rented the piece of property also.
Well, I'm sure, no, when he rented the piece of property, we didn't have the sign ordinance. We did this last year. We did this last year. Charlie, when did we do the sign ordinance?
It was back a couple years ago.
Ah, two years ago.
Ninety-six. Yeah, it was back in ninety-six.
I was here, I was on the council when we did it. He was there then.
Well, perhaps that ordinance, as I've said about other ordinances, none of them are cast in stone and possibly need to be fine-tuned.
Absolutely.
But I hate to see anything thrown out in its entirety, because there's bound to be some good parts in there, too.
That's correct, and, and it's my understanding that it's presently being looked at.
Archie's been being looked at all year. This started in January.
You know, what do you want us to do? We can't, we can't do anything unless it's looked at first. Okay, we can't make the changes, and, and I don't think you ought to throw out a whole ordinance, because there's some changes that are needed. I think what you need to do is direct someone to make the changes, or at least make the recommendations. Make it on it as soon as possible.
We're gonna look at it tomorrow. We'll give you, we'll make sure it's on the agenda for tomorrow, and we'll have a report back to the council.
So, what we're gonna do is stop any of the future businesses that come in from putting them in the right of way.
That's the way it's written right now. If you look at it and you change that, I don't know.
Well...
We're going to go according to code, though. That much I will tell.
Well, I don't think you want according to...
According to code right now, on that particular mall.
Right.
If he changes and puts a new building in there, then the planning commission will recommend and ask him, in fact, insists on it, that he remove that sign and put up signage that'll take care of everyone in his mall.
So, he's gonna put up a building and put a sign up?
That's what he wants to do.
Listen, if he wants a site plan approval...
Well, why are you talking about code? I want our attorney to go look at that sign over there at the lake, and I think the interpretation of that code has been pretty creative, very creative, and you know it as well as I do. Extremely creative, and it...
Sign ordinance.
And it makes us look real bad when we start taking people and showing favoritism, especially people that work for the city.
As I said, just prior to this meeting is when you advised me...
I'm not blaming you, Your Honor.
No, but you just advised me, yes, we are going to investigate this.
John, John Kirk and I have been talking about it, and I asked John to go look at it, and he said, well, I, I talked to the code department, I talked to Archie, that in, there really isn't anything in the sign ordinance that says if the, if the piece of property is vacant, the guy has to adhere to the code. That's what we're saying.
We were, we were looking at that.
Isn't that what we're saying?
No, that's, that's not exactly right, no. What we're saying is, there's not a permanent structure on there, then the sign ordinance does not take effect.
So, it specifically says in the sign ordinance there has to be a permanent structure for that?
I believe it does, but, you know, I'm not a enforcement person.
That is, that is a section that could be modified.
Absolutely.
Definitely. We can modify that section.
But it's not the planning commission that should be modifying the sign ordinance.
No, 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 that, that is something, that is something that the legislative committee will look at, and if there is something that is in there that is letting something slip through the cracks, we can tighten that up.
Don't get me wrong, Archie, I, I think it's good that he's got a business there, and I don't mind his sign being there, but it gives a, it gives an awful lot of luck of being unfair. And he's not the only one talking about it. There's a lot of people talking about it. A lot of people talking about it.
Ron, are you talking about that sign? Are you talking about the sign down by the lake there?
Yeah.
Is, is that not on private property?
It's in the city right of way.
Is it in the city's right of way?
I don't think so. I think it's on private property.
Well, wait a minute.
But that's not for me to...
If you're talking about the, the sign...
Does the city own that mall, or Darrell Hayden's got a shop? That's private property, too, isn't it?
But it owns the right of way.
No, it doesn't. The forty-one is the state right of way.
Okay.
I thought. Do we own forty-one? I thought we got state aid, didn't maintain it.
With forty-one, with state, with the state highway...
Right.
They have a right of way, and you cannot do anything without getting a permit from the state DOT.
Well, we changed that by the, through legislation. Now they got to get one from us, even if the state told them yes, right?
Well, not in regards to the state right of way. They still have to go through DOT, I believe. So, do they?
Sure.
So...
If, if, if the, if the state owns the right of way, then they would have to go to DOT for their, for their permits.
So, then why are...
They're putting a sign in the right of way.
So, then why are we telling people they can't put one there?
What do you mean? Why are we telling them we can't put one there?
Do we, do, we don't regulate that area?
We regulate...
So, what I'm seeing is, this guy could go out and put one in the four eighty-one right of way if they let him?
I don't think so.
That's what I'm saying, Archie. That's just exactly what I'm saying.
But he would have to put it in his state right of way. He would have to get a permit from the state to do it.
And then he'd have to come back and get one from the city, if the state told him yes.
Well, we've got a whole question about the city and state right of way here that needs to be addressed also. We need to know who owns or regulates the right of way. We need to know who would be responsible if something happened within the right of way.
Yeah, 'cause we got signs there, Joe.
Extra life we have.
Lots of them.
And that, and that's an opinion that we need from the legal department.
We're looking at that, too, with the right of ways. Head it tomorrow.
Okay. I still got a problem, and I don't think we're being fair. I think we're letting some people do some things and other people not.
You know, I spoke to this, this was for Hayden himself.
Oh, I know you did, Archie. I know you did.
And, and I thought that he understood what the situation was.
He understood what you said to him, yeah.
He understood that.
Yeah.
But apparently, he still isn't satisfied, though, because he's calling everybody...
No, 'cause he doesn't have a sign. He mostly advertises business like anyone else. I looked at his books. He's paying the city sales tax quite a little bit for what he's doing, and a lot of his customers...
Why doesn't he get permission from his, his landlord to either put up a sign himself or have his landlord put up the sign? I don't think it's the city...
No, 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 no. Wait a minute. He wanted to put a sign up himself, away from his landlord, and Mike asked the code enforcement department to get with him, to do that, and, and, and Mark, I think, knows what I'm talking about. They come up with a thing that included everybody else's business for him. Now, it's not fair to ask him to buy a, a, a thing that houses everyone else's sign. Would you do it?
Nobody asked him to do that. Nobody asked him to do that. He had, was supposed to get together with the landlord up there to do that, because what the, I, I believe the way the code reads, it has to do with the size of a sign for the amount of, of businesses in an area.
The problem, the problem down there, and I've talked to Darryl on this, too, in that Darryl has spoken to, well, he really doesn't wanna speak to the landlord, 'cause he doesn't think it's the landlord's responsibility to go in there. He's, he's not gonna tear down there. He's got a sign down there that says, what, Fulton Mall or something like that? It's useless. It's useless. In fact, it's in the sight of traffic. Again, you pull up there from Division Street and look left down 481, you know, looking south, and that thing is right there. I don't, personally, I don't think that sign, that particular sign should even be where it is.
The landlord has agreed to remove that.
And that's causing the problem. And he was in here, the landlord was in here last week with the planning commission meeting and, you know, he acts totally ignorant about the sign problem down there.
He don't want to spend the money. That's the problem. He doesn't want to do it.
Then he doesn't get a site plan.
I think that'll happen. We're in a better position now with the site plan, with him wanting to put a parcel separate from the mall than we've been before. But I think it's the landlord's responsibility. If I'm a tenant, I'm gonna ask my landlord,
Yeah.
I want to put a sign up.
He should be happy. He should be happy to do it.
Or I'm gonna move, I'm gonna move out of the plaza. If I can't get a sign up to advertise my business, I'm going somewhere else.
Problem is, there isn't a lot of places in Fulton and I don't want to see him move this way or something. I think we ought to encourage people to stay here.
Oh, yeah, I don't want him to move, but I mean, the landlord has to take that responsibility.
He's actually got a pretty nice shop down there and it's really too bad that he's got poor advertising from the street. Even if he did some, a sign like the one that's on the side of his building for out front, would be pretty decent advertising for him.
You can't do that, can you, Archie? You see what I'm saying? That's the whole point. You can't do that.
Ron, I understand what you're saying. I understand what you're trying to do. Okay, but the fact still remains-
You can't do it, right.
That it's his responsibility and the landlord's. Okay? If he wants to advertise his business and he's renting from a landlord, he should see the landlord about his sign. We're trying to do as much as we can for him.
Yeah, but it sounds to me like he's not gonna get the sign unless everybody else comes together on it. And I don't see why Eckard or any of the rest of them would, because when you drive down 481, there's big signs all across the front there that advertise all them businesses.
Well, one of the things-
It's an incentive to change.
He has the same kind of sign in front of his business, too.
Yeah.
Right. Well, what we have is if the property owner would be willing to take down that Fulton Fair sign that doesn't accomplish anything, if that one comes down, then he could put a sign up.
Not at that location, your honor.
No, no, not at that location because that is on the state railway.
This is pretty complicated, really, for-
Yes, it is.
-advertising his business.
Yes, it is. And we need to straighten out that right of way situation also, definitely. But we are working, we've worked with him, we are continuing to work with him. And the planning commission, I know, is working to try to get something done down in that area. And since the property owner now wants to do something different with the property-
I know he wanted to build something down there. If he builds something down there, you're telling him he's gotta put a sign up.
That's what we've done.
That's what we're working on.
That's what we've done.
Also, I'd like David to look at that sign ordinance and make an interpretation of me, vacant lots.
That's what we've requested, too.
I'm not aware of the particular sign you're talking about. Where exactly is it?
It's not just it, there's other ones too. It's down by the lake.
Side corporate, what's that? Side corporate, Barrett Drive.
It's London Broil.
So that's not really the right of way. That's not the right of way. But it is on private property because Rich Ledoux owns that property.
Yeah, I know.
City's been trying to buy it from him for years.
Right.
I know.
We'll go down and look at it.
I don't have a problem with him having the sign. I just, it just feels like it's unfair to bring a new kid in town, let him do what he wants and tell a guy that's been here 50 years, no.
No, he hasn't done what he wants. He's done what he can do on private property, Ron. That's what he's done.
The mall is private property too. We don't, the mall is private property too.
If it is private property, then his problem is with the landlord.
The landlord owns it.
He owns the land there.
So what you're saying is if you own the property, you can put any sign you want on it.
Providing you don't make it more than what the regulations indicate.
Yeah, because I thought it had to be like eight foot from the ground to the bottom of the sign.
Not necessarily. Depends on the kind of sign.
Okay. I'd still like you to look at it, though. I still think it was a little bit creative. My opinion. I'm entitled to it. Thank you, your honor.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I do. I had a couple, in fact, a couple ladies here right now leaving tonight. I've had a couple inter-.
Win, whoa. Just in time. Saved by the bell. Don't leave there. Talk quick.
Last year, as I campaigned, especially down on Solaway, I was informed that they had a lighting prob, a streetlight problem down there. So, you know, this year I found out, as I get in the office, that, you know, take a look around, see if there's any available and we can move them down there. So, somebody tells me that there's Eberch Street down there. I hadn't even found Eberch Street. Okay, there probably aren't that many people in this room that even know where Eberch Street is, but I find the street, I drive back in there, sure enough, there's, the street goes back to nowhere, really. I drive back in there and it looks like it's a wooded area, backyards or whatnot. So I find two streetlights back there and, you know, I'm told that, well, it's not a problem, we can move them over. So I said, I authorized the moving of the streetlights. Well, now I've had four inquiries, counting these two ladies here tonight, about why those streetlights were moved and I told them, really, what I did is I just made a decision to move them to a populated area, you know. I just feel that the city is probably wasting money lighting up that area. I don't, you know, did I do that out of line or, you know, do I not have that authorization to do that? Or is that something I have to have a public meeting on or, you know, what's the story with that?
And what are they lighting? What were they lighting in Eberch Street? Is there a home down there? A business or something?
No, no. Oh, okay, I know where that is.
But for security reasons, I think the lights should have been left there. And I also feel that the neighbors should have been advised before. Not necessarily myself because I'm not right next to the road, but the people that pay taxes on the land on either side of it should have been advised before it was done. I mean, just go in and- Authority to-
I think the city has legal rights to move them. In this case, it was, maybe, it's vacant land back there, right?
Yeah, there's really, what it is, it's a, there was a trailer park back in there. You can see on the map that there's a few lots back there. And I don't even know if those subdivisions are still, you know, if that's still there. I believe that the subdivision still, it looks like a subdivision anyway. There's also a garage back there behind, I believe the house is owned by Ingalls. Okay, you got Foster on the west side and Ingalls on the east side of the street. Ingalls also has a garage back there that faces Eberch Street. I also found out that we are also plowing this street. So essentially what's happening is we're kind of like plowing the driveway to that garage. Really maintaining that property back there. I just felt that maybe the city at this time should abandon the maintenance of that street until there's a populace, you know, somebody moves back in there. It was my thinking to save money in the ward, to move the lights over to a populated area where people actually needed the lights. I actually got quite a few thanks from that area down there for putting the lights up in that area. But now I'm getting jeers for taking them out of somebody's backyard. I mean, that's the way I look at it. I thought, you know, really we're lighting up somebody's backyard at this point and I was just trying to save the city money and expenditure of adding lights to the bill because we are paying the bill on that. We're also paying the bill for the two poles that are back there. You know, I don't, I wasn't going to, my thinking was not to really tear the street up. My thinking is just abandon the maintenance of it at this time until there is, you know, somebody living back there. There is vacant property back there. It'd be, you know, probably a nice area for somebody to move back in there and build back in there. But at this point in time, I just didn't feel it was, you know, necessary to maintain it. I was gonna talk to Dave about that as far as, you know, abandoning the maintenance of the street right now. I don't know. Plus, they, I guess they put a new sign on there. I wasn't aware of that. I drove by there after Mrs. Foster called me. She says, well, you put a new sign on there. And I says, I was not aware of the new sign. But I guess it's misspelled also. So, uh, that's what I heard. I heard it was misspelled. I don't know. But at this point in time, I felt that unless there is, you know, activity back there, I don't really see a need for the lights back there right now.
We've done it quite a few times, right, so we're to-
We've got the proper- Make a decision to allocate resources some fashion where it's most beneficial to most people.
I just looked at it as a money savings, you know, for the city.
Anyone else?
I got a couple of things. I sent a letter to the mayor and to the council for their consideration for wheelchair accessible structures that have to be put on, that are necessary for the people.
I'm referring that to legislative.
Okay, all right. I just thought it was a city-friendly type of thing to do if we can do it and certainly wouldn't be something that's going to-
What is it?
That's going on tomorrow's too.
Okay.
Wheelchair ramps.
That's all you want to do is wave the fee right back?
Yeah, I want to see what your thoughts are. I think it's a good thing.
I don't think anybody has a problem. I've already suggested that myself that we should waive the fees.
Just waive the fees on something like that that's a necessity that, and I'm sure there's not that many people that are, it's not something that's happening all the time and they are in a disadvantaged position to begin with, so.
Well, even though you just addressed handicapped ramp at this point, in discussing this with other people, they said, well, how about if somebody has to make modifications to a dwelling for handicapped?
I would say the same thing.
I think we need to, we need to make this more all-encompassing.
You can expand it, expand it, sure.
Yeah.
Sure.
Anything to have to do with handicapped, you know, private residents, I think we should be able to do-
You're talking about keeping the permit, right?
They have to get a permit, but we waive the fee.
You still have to have it inspected so that-
Inspection, but the only thing is the cost. We just waived the fee.
It's a good idea.
The second item I have, I have Mr. and Mrs. Dings in the audience and Mr. Hitchcock. And I've just talked to Dings and I know that they're here to address the changes that we're making on McCollum for drainage. I had talked to Roger three weeks ago and he said it would start three weeks from then. So I think they're looking for an update and they're real concerned because traditionally every year they get water in their cellars from drainage backup and we're gonna address that. And I know it's gonna be, I know it's gonna be done, but it's hard when you're looking at that and nobody's working on it, they get, they kind of get concerned. And Mr. Wilkes also called me and wanted me to address the council tonight and find out some specifics. And I know that there's a number of projects going on in the city and I think what we're doing, of course, is using our city people on most every project we can for cost saving. So with that, I guess we have to adjust some of the schedules. But I did talk to Mayor Stafford just before the meeting and he said he would talk to Roger Parsons tomorrow and get just a little bit more of an update as to when they think they will start that.
I'm going to make a semi-educated guess that the problem was they've been working on the catch basins in a downtown project to get that done so they could put the curbing in and not hold up the contractor over there. And I think they, as soon as they get that done, they're going to move over on that, but I will check with Roger tomorrow to make sure.
We've waited a long time for these things to happen. It's now the third week in August. And I called the engineer's office and I was told people were working downtown and then I hear they're not gonna finish that project until November. And I just wanted some information.
What they are doing, what our water department is doing down there is putting in the catch basins so that they can do the rest, then the contractor does the rest of it. But we have to get our section of it done is to not hold the contractor up over there. So, they should be there. If they're not done, they should be very close to downtown because they've had some very good weather and then they will move over on that project. But as I said, I will check with Roger tomorrow and see if I can- Oh, certainly, certainly. The summer is fading.
Would that address your concerns too, Mr. and Mrs. Dings?
Place now for children to play. I'm a little concerned that someone might get hurt on those pipes that are laying there. Are you having a great time?
The pipes are in the park.
So anyone else in the audience that has anything for the council? At this time, it will entertain a motion to go into executive session on a matter of pending litigation.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carried.
Yeah, I saw you trip over that on the way out.
Yeah, just gouged your head on a table.
We talked about wireless microphones before too. I don't know how much it would cost.
How much EMF does this microphone get off?
Meeting, or next-
Kiss that baby.
Next budget.
Where's the antenna gotta go for that?
Not in my ward.
It's in my house.
We are back in open session. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
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 You get the second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You can adjourn.